Okay, recording now.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Good morning, everyone. I will now call this session of the Seadrill Willie Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is Thursday, April 11, 2024 at nine o'clock a.m. We have one item on the agenda today, number CUP 2023-366, a request for amendment of a previously issued conditional use permit, or CUP, for the Skagit Stabilization Campus located next to the Life Care Center of Skagit Valley. The proposed amendment would allow for a 21,500 square foot detox and withdrawal management facility with 48 beds. That is an increase from the previously approved facility, which was approximately half that size. I believe I am also being asked to approve a reasonable use exception to allow the reduction of a type three stream buffer for Brickyard Creek from the standard 110 feet down to a proposed 55 feet. And if that's not correct, we can discuss that during the hearing. My name is Alex Seidels. I'm an independent hearing examiner whom the city has selected to hold certain land use hearings like this one. It will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether the application is consistent with the city code, comprehensive plan, critical areas ordinance, and the conditional use permit approval criteria. To that end, I received and reviewed 12 exhibits in advance of the hearing. These include the staff report, the CUP application with narratives, a site plan, a critical areas letter and mitigation plan, the public notice materials, and the environmental review materials, including a mitigated determination of non-significance issued by the city on March 1, 2024. I will admit these exhibits into the record at this time. Should anyone have additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under oath or affirmation. And that is because if my decision on this case were to be appealed, the recording of today's hearing, along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision, would service the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those that are testifying. My purpose is not to trip anyone up or embarrass anyone or to prolong this hearing or be difficult in any way. I am only trying to ensure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal. And that way, after the record closes, I can produce a decision that I hope will be clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I think we will be following today, is first, we will hear from city staff who will provide an overview of the proposal, along with any recommendations the city may have. After that, we will hear from the applicant to see if there is any additional information they feel myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my decision being issued. After the applicant, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify. Following any public testimony, we will turn back to the city and the applicant as necessary for any response. Everyone wishing to testify will have an opportunity to do so, but just like at an in-person hearing, this will not involve question and answer sessions or objections or multiple speaking opportunities for members of the public. So with that, I think we can get started. Let us see, who is appearing on behalf of the city this morning?
That would be me.
Good morning, Ms. McGowan. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give today will be the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you. And although I can see your name on my screen, the official record of today's proceedings is the audio, not the video. So would you mind spelling your name for us?
Nicole, N.I.C.O.L.E. McGowan, M.C.G.O.W.A.N.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. And what is your role with the city, please?
The planner with the city of Seadrill Willie.
All right. Ms. McGowan, did my summary of the 12 exhibits track with what you were hoping I would review in advance of today's hearing?
It does. I kind of want to talk about the reduction of the critical areas.
I want to talk about that, too.
If now would be a good time to do that.
Yes, yeah, just procedurally, obviously, I'm being asked to do a CUP. Am I also being asked to issue a RUX on this stream buffer?
I would say no, because that work has already been done. The reduction has been done, and the work within the critical areas buffer is already completed.
All right, maybe we can hear some testimony on these past decisions. I'm well aware that I am coming to this development, you know, very far along in the course of its life. Obviously, a lot of things have been reviewed long before I got here. My purpose is not to reinvent the wheel. However, I have to make sure that every land use decision I issue complies with every applicable code. Obviously, the critical areas ordinance is an applicable code. So I'm not just willing to, you know, hand wave away the stream buffer. So we'll have to strike a balance here between not reinventing the wheel while simultaneously, you know, I need to write a decision that shows the critical areas ordinance is being honored. So maybe when we get to a point in your narrative where it makes sense, we can discuss how the stream and its buffer reduction came to be.
So.
Am I right in thinking there was no written public comments?
Correct.
Okay, and nothing came in, you know, after the staff report that I haven't seen yet?
That's correct.
All right. And are you putting forward any exhibits today, a PowerPoint or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Well, let's just roll right into your testimony. And if I end up having more questions about the stream, I will rudely interrupt you and ask, as I always do.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
So originally, phases one and two of the Skagit Stabilization Center was permitted under conditional use permit 2019-362. Phase one of the project, which included a 16-bed evaluation and treatment center, the driveway, the parking area, landscaping, utilities, and stormwater management originally intended to serve both phases of the development have already been completed. So the applicants have submitted another conditional use permit under 2023-366, which we are hearing today, as they've decided to increase the size of this essential public facility, the phase two facility. It was originally intended to be 12,500 square feet and 24 beds for the acute detox withdrawal management facility. They have proposed to increase it to 21,500 square feet and 48 beds, about double the size. The intended use of the facility still remains the same. So Skagit PUD has no comments as the applicants had installed all the water lines and the infrastructure for any fire service or meters that they would need to the phase two building as part of phase one. The new sewer stub is already in place to serve the phase two building and is sufficient to serve the larger sized facility. They already have a centralized trash and recycling area. The planning department did review for setback compliance and found that the site layout as proposed does meet setback regulations. The engineering department required that the applicant apply for a fill-in grade permit, under which the city engineer will review a drainage report and other materials to determine to what extent the existing stormwater facility may need to be upgraded to serve the larger phase two facility. And that requirement is captured in the conditions of the new SEPA MDNS that was issued for this file, specifically condition number three. The.
Let me take a look at that condition there, because stormwater is one of my questions. Action measure number three, any water discharge to the city stormwater system as a result of this project must be approved by and comply with conditions of the Public Works Department. I may have some questions about that, but for now, let's continue.
Yep, the fire department, building department, and planning department will have the chance to review for fire code compliance, building code compliance, and compliance with applicable design standards at the time of building permit application review. As far as critical areas go, the site itself contains no wetlands or critical areas. However, Brickyard Creek, which is a type three fish-bearing stream, has been identified as a critical area within the area. It runs inside the state Route 20 right-of-way to south of the subject property. The city and county have worked jointly to design and construct road improvements to state Route 20 to include a center turn lane to allow safe access to the site. The city and the county also worked on the design and construction of a bottomless box closure across Brickyard Creek to provide access to the site. Both of those improvements were completed as part of phase one. A city-planned pedestrian path along the north side of Brickyard Creek is also planned. The cumulative impacts of all of these projects were considered and included in the anticipated buffer impact. And the approved mitigation plan from the original application has been carried over to the proposal. The mitigation.
So when you say the original one, you're talking about CUP 2019-362?
Correct.
So somewhere in 362, I will see. I mean, was it, it must have been a RUX at that time, though, right? Because they went from 110 down to, I think, 55, right?
Correct. Yeah, the mitigation plan included a buffer reduction in accordance with the city's critical area ordinance. They used mitigation banking to compensate for the improvements along the property's frontage on state Route 20, Brickyard Creek.
I guess the reason I specifically ask whether it's a reasonable use exception as opposed to a more, you know, run-of-the-mill buffer reduction is critical use exceptions are subject to more stringent criteria. For example, you only get your RUX if, you know, in the absence of a RUX, you would have no economically viable use whatsoever of your entire property. It is a measure of last resort. Is that the process that we went through here to shrink the buffer as part of phase one? It doesn't exactly sound like it.
Well, I think.
And I ask because 362 is not actually in the record, at least so far, for me to consider in this case. Maybe, maybe we'd better start with getting me a copy of 362. And I can see, you know, what kind of approval the the buffer reduction was given at that time.
I think that's included in, let's see what exhibit it was. Exhibit K, that was from 362.
Exhibit K is from 362, you say?
Yeah, the mitigation plan that was carried over.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I understand that. But, you know, a mitigation plan is only one small sequence in the, in the process of obtaining a RUX. It's not the case that you just send in a mitigation plan and build whatever buffer you want. It's a little bit more formal than that. You know, like, like the mitigation plan, for example, you know, prepared by Widener and Associates. Obviously, Widener and Associates is not, you know, the body that decides whether a regulatory buffer should be reduced. The city is the body that decides that. So where is the city's decision that says, you know, good news, everyone, your mitigation plan is terrific, and we've decided to reduce your buffer? Where can, where can I find that city decision?
Let me look at the SEPA from the old.
And the reason, and the reason, folks, that it matters to me is, you know, like I said, I have to make sure that the proposal in front of me, you know, complies with all of the approval criteria, including compliance with the critical areas ordinance. Now, the critical areas ordinance would normally slap a 110-foot buffer on you folks here, which obviously would have pretty big implications for the project. If that buffer has been reduced by the city, I'm not inclined to revisit that decision. I just have to make sure that that was the decision. As I say, it's, it's not the applicant that, you know, decides that they get a reduced buffer. It's certainly not the applicant's, you know, mitigation consultant that decides that. It's the city that decides that. If the city's made the decision and nobodies appealed it, as I say, I'm not inclined to disturb it now. But if that decision was never made, then it kind of seems like it's on my desk to make. So that's, that's why I really want to to figure out the history of how we came to have a 55-foot buffer here.
SEPA MDNS, all of them only have two conditions in it.
Well, but, but an MDNS also wouldn't be the vehicle for reducing a buffer. You know, just hypothetically, where you might find this would be maybe the CUP for phase one, because that's an actual decision by the city. And it might say something like, you know, your request for a reduced buffer is hereby approved. It might be what I'm really hoping you'll find, Ms. McGowan, is a standalone RUX decision, because the normal way for getting a RUX is to apply specifically for one. It goes through a process in Seadrill Willie. It may actually be a hearing examiner process for all I know. And but regardless of whether it's a hearing examiner process or a departmental process, you know, whoever the decision maker is on that RUX application will hand you a decision in writing that says, "RUX approved. Your buffer is now 55 feet." That's what I'm hoping you'll dig up. And sometimes a RUX will be incorporated into a larger permit decision such as a CUP, so it's conceivable that CUP 2019-362 would have that baked into it. I don't know, because it's, as I say, it's not in the record that I've reviewed. So I don't know where this decision is, but I sure would like to see it before I'm asked to make my own decision on this. And if this is something that, you know, would be better done, I'm reluctant to do it after the hearing, because I may, you know, whatever you dig up, I may have questions about it, and it's nice to be able to ask you those questions, you know, during the public hearing. And, you know, another, another way we can proceed, just in the interest of efficiency, is this stuff with the stream is, in my mind, you know, the hardest question before me. We can deal with easier questions first and then circle back to the stream, if you'd rather, however you want to do.
I did find the hearing examiner's decision from the old one, so I was reading through the.
Okay, great, yeah.
Yeah. Decision was approved with the following conditions. Speaks to the reduction. No, nothing speaks to the reduction in that. Yeah, so I guess, I guess I'm just confused, because the, the phase one project had been approved. And that phase one project included all of the, all of the development that would impact the buffer area, including the access, right? So that's, that's really the only part of that phase one that, that affected the buffers. So I'm not, I, I'm kind of in disagreement that we, that we would need to address the buffer reduction in this case, because we're, we're just increasing the size of the phase two facility. This project, phase two, doesn't impact the buffer. All of that work's already been done.
Well, let's take a look at the site plan, because obviously, we are building a bigger facility now. Because maybe that's a way to kind of get out of this thorny question, if they're not building within the buffer. Well. It's a little bit hard to estimate. So I'm looking at some of the site plans here. Phase one has already physically been built, right? Building A is currently in existence.
Correct.
All right. So really, we're just looking at phase two. We do have a driveway cutting through, but I assume that's in existence already as well. The parking spaces. But those might be outside the buffer. I don't know. You tell me, Ms. McGowan, you know, you know, the project better than I do. Are we, let's say there is a 110-foot buffer. Are we doing anything inside that buffer today?
We are not.
So maybe I just don't need to worry about it, then. You take a look at what what we're saying here in terms of the buffer. Just checking the MDNS as well for buffer-related materials. All right. Well, so here's how I think I'll handle the Brickyard Creek and its buffer. If, you know, all I'm looking at is a CUP for phase two, I'm not looking at an overall CUP for the entire thing. This is normal for phase development. If nothing in this phase is coming within 110 feet of the buffer, then there's nothing for me to worry about. So if, if, if everyone agrees that that's accurate, then we can move on. If not, we have to find some other way to address it. So once and for all, we're outside 110 foot? Okay, I will stop tormenting us all with talk of streams and buffers and past land use decisions. All right. So I derailed things pretty badly there, Ms. McGowan. Can you, can you remember where you left off and pick up there?
Yeah, yeah. So generally, the conditions of approval have been carried over from the original approval, including the requirement that the applicant submit a facility operations plan prior to building occupancy approving, approval, stipulating how Skagit County, which is the facility operator, and the city will work in good faith to address any facility operation concerns as they arise. We've added that the applicant must admit elevations at the time of building permit applications to include how the design will meet the requirements of the design standards. So pretty simple. Pretty much all I looked at was that. So everything else kind of comes at later permitting. So.
Right.
Fill-in grade is going to be kind of where we tackled with stormwater stuff, but everything else has been done. So that's where we're at.
All right. So my understanding is this is a type one essential public facility, just given its size and the, the number and geographic location of the folks it's intended to serve. That being the case, I see that there are special rules for approval of type one EPFs in the Seadrill Willie Code. The one that most caught my eye was that there are special public notice procedures for type one EPFs. In particular, they have to provide 90 days' notice. And this is in 17.88.060. And it's subsection B1, and it says, "Applications for specific projects shall not be considered complete in the absence of proof of a published notice and notice to the city regarding the proposed project." So just looking in the materials in the record here, it did not look to me like we did the special 90-day notice for this amendment to phase two, did we?
No, Steph felt that that had been done under the original CUP application. And with the notice of application and SEPA comment period, just indicating that the facility is just going to be bigger. That's enough public comments opportunity in this case.
Yeah, it's not like, you know, this was a non-EPF, and then this, this new expansion turns it into an EPF. It's been an EPF since day one.
Right, same here.
All right, let's see. So back in the original, you know, CUP 362 days, they would have provided public notice, is that right? The 90-day notice?
Right, yes. Skagit County handled that one.
Oh. Okay, because they're the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I've got you. Well, I think at a minimum here, Ms. McGowan, I'd like to get a copy of 362 into the record. And actually, while you've been talking, I've gone through my old files that I took over from the previous hearing examiner. I have what looks like his draft of 362, but I don't have the actual signed decision, and I have no way of knowing if his draft may, you know, have been changed relative to what I have seen. I will note, in his draft, he talks about the special notice requirements in 17.88.060, and it looks like it went through it at that time. So why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't you send me the signed CUP 2019-362? And, you know, look, there's even discussion of Brickyard Creek. Maybe a lot of the stuff that I have will be covered in that, like the public notice stuff. I, I think I, I think I agree with you that, you know, merely doubling the size of the facility doesn't generate a new type one EPF land use, and so it shouldn't generate a new 90-day public notice thing. I think, I think just kind of the standard CUP notice would work. All right. So, yeah, after the hearing, you can send me a copy of 362. Why don't you walk me through the notice that was provided just for this CUP portion? And specifically, I'm interested in, you know, dates, and was it posted on site? And, you know, when did it appear in the newspaper and things of that nature? I think this is covered pretty well in the staff report and exhibits, but maybe you can walk me through it anyways.
Sure, yeah. So the notice of application and SEPA comment period was issued on January 24, 2024. We did, at the same day as the issuance, the January 24, we ensured that that was posted on site on the public street frontage and also mailed to all property owners and residents within 500 feet of the site as publishing in the Skagit Valley Herald.
Skagit Valley Herald, and the publication also occurred on the same day?
Yeah, all three happened.
All right. So that covers two of our events, which is notice of application and notice that there is a, a public comment process. This is the optional DNS process, yeah? Okay, the next event should have been noticed that, you know, the DNS process is complete, and we've got this MDNS, and here it is. So how did notice of that go out?
Right. So then we issued the SEPA MDNS, mitigated the term of non-significance on March 1, 2024. In the same way, we sent, we're posted the MDNS on site on the public street frontage the same day, as well as notification by mail and within the schedule.
All right. And did the MDNS, do you have a DNS notification roster or anything like that? You sent it to the Department of Ecology, potentially affected tribes. I have in mind here, again, Brickyard Creek. It's a fish-bearing stream, you know, fish implicate all kinds of other agencies. Besides the standard notice of onsite posting and mailing out to property owners and publication in the newspaper, did you also direct it towards some of these affected agencies and tribes?
Yes, right.
All right. And that was also March 1, all of that?
All of that.
All right. And then the final event, I guess, would be notice of today's hearing. So what can you tell me about how that went out?
Need my date.
Yeah, oh, yeah, because I got to put the dates in my decision. So it's, I really, you know, I'm never happy when, when pine staff are like, oh, you know, we published in the newspaper, and they don't know when. I'm like, no, I have to say when.
No worries. So notice of public hearing was issued on March 30. So that was posted on the subject site, published in the legal notices section of the Skagit Valley Herald, and then mailed to all residents and property on 200 feet.
Okay. Presumably, it was not mailed to parties of record, because I don't think there are parties of.
Didn't have parties of.
Yeah. All right. All right. So when you, when you solicited comments on the MDNS from ecology and the tribes, no response, I take it?
Correct.
Okay. Had, had they weighed in earlier on the Brickyard Creek stuff? It just, it kind of boggles my mind. You know, that a significant stream like that could lose half its buffer, and nobody would make a peep. This, this may be something I can learn myself by reading 362, but, but you know, it just, it just seems just seems strange to me that, that it would have happened this way.
Yeah. So looking through my files here. So the Department of Ecology did submit a comment under 2019-362. This person notes four sites of ecology cleanups within one-half mile to one mile of the location. That's it.
Well, if ecology didn't have an issue related to fish, I'm certainly not going to manufacture an issue for them. And it doesn't sound like they weighed in this time either, so maybe.
Right, yeah.
I keep promising to leave the creek alone, and then I keep, you know, circling back to the creek. So maybe, maybe now I'm serious. Maybe we really can move on from the creek. All right. I don't think I have any more questions for you on public notice. Let me see what else I've got. Yeah, can you tell me a little bit about the parking space calculation? We're, we're, you know, doubling the number of patients. We're nearly doubling the square footage. Does that have any implications for the amount of parking that has to be provided here?
No. So the, the parking that they've provided well exceeded what the basic requirement would be for this.
What were those basic requirements?
So according to the section here.
And as I keep, you know, flinging, you know, random curveballs at you from, from different angles, and, and just when you think you're finally ready to talk creeks, we're suddenly talking parking, so it's.
So for chapter 1736, the number of spaces required here. So for this, there, we've classified this as kind of a residential healthcare facility. So that requirement is one parking space per three beds.
So I'm in 1736-030. And where did we say? You said residential?
Right, the letter J.
Yep, I got you. Yep, one per three beds. Okay, and the beds here was 48. So whatever, three times 48 is 140, something like that? I don't know, 130? They're shaking their heads. Look at me doing math in my head and doing. one hundred forty four, hey, I got it. So one hundred forty four parking spaces is required. How many are provided? Everyone is disagreeing with this. Uh oh, you're you're losing the crowd here, Ms. McGowan. No one, no one's happy with your one hundred forty four parking spaces because that's not how many they've provided, is it? So we must have some alternative explanation.
I think there's a bit of a math now through this.
All right. Oh, it's one per three beds. I was doing, I was multiplying the denominators. All right, one per three beds. This makes so much more sense. All right, forty eight beds divided by three gives you only sixteen parking spaces. We've eliminated over a hundred parking spaces that I was wondering what they're going to use that parcel to the west for. It was a giant field of parking spaces, no kidding. All right, well, so obviously, they're well over that, as you say. So I've embarrassed myself enough here with the math, we won't go further on parking. Presumably, there was no need for a T I A or maybe the T I A was one of the many things that was baked into three sixty two. How are we doing on on traffic impact?
Traffic impact, so far as I know, David, our city engineer, did provide comments during the pre-op for this.
Yeah, I don't believe I've seen that.
No, but so essentially, what what David does is during the fill-in grade permit application, he does calculate it out from his
Wait, he calculates the the number of trips based on the fill-in grade, but filling and grading doesn't generate any trips except just the dump truck or whatever.
Oh, sorry, I misspoke, building permit.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, so maybe I'm 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 premature on traffic impact. This is something that waits to the building permit phase?
Correct, I would say.
Well, that's fine. And then, you know, there's always a question in my mind, if there's something like that that's being deferred to the building permit phase, do I need to, you know, write it into the approval at this phase? Like, make sure you pay your traffic fees. I think usually the answer is no, because if it's a requirement to pay them anyways, what's the point of me making it a separate condition, right?
Right, yeah, that would come later.
Yeah, all right, yeah, and I don't see that you're recommending that kind of condition. Some jurisdictions do, you know, some will say, you know, condition thirty, make sure you pay your parking fees, thirty one, make sure you pay your school fees. I I that's kind of thing is usually superfluous for this type of permit, in my opinion. So, all right, maybe we won't deal with that now. And then, as I promised, a question on stormwater. You say there may be the possibility that the stormwater facilities that were originally designed, you know, as part of the site plan may have to be enlarged. Did I understand you correctly?
Yes, there's a possibility. So what David will do under the fill-in grade permit application because required that the applicant provide a stormwater site plan or drainage report.
Wait, again, the fill-in grade thing? Why would you do? Do you mean building permit again?
Fill-in grade.
Fill-in grade, why would we do a stormwater permit under fill-in grade? You're not putting in any impervious surface.
In the case they need to excavate further.
Yeah, all right. And have they gotten their fill-in grade permit?
For the phase one, that's all done, but no, they haven't applied for that, waiting on approval on this before we move forward.
Yeah, that makes sense in some ways. I mean, but there's no reason you couldn't do it now, right? Like, we know how much impervious surface is going to be built. We know where the parking spaces are, like, no reason you couldn't do your stormwater analysis now, right?
Supposed.
All right, well, it's a nice big site. Let me take a look, where is the stormwater facility? Do we have a good site plan?
Should I comment on this or?
Certainly, we can certainly call in other witnesses to testify. I I do like to do the witnesses one at a time, but yeah, if someone has thoughts on this and wants to help out Ms. McGowan, who's is just getting attacked by all eagles here.
I just wanted to say that the 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 stormwater report was submitted during the for the permit. We're waiting for the conditional use permit to be approved before we can get approval on the permit, but
Let's let's stop because now wait, 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 wait. Now we're getting into substantive testimony, so we're going to hear from the applicant team in just a moment. This sounds like useful testimony. We we just have to make sure that it's given under oath or affirmation and and kind of take it in order. Right now, I'm just looking for a nice site plan that shows where is the the stormwater on, I know I saw this earlier, one sec here. I didn't see it, maybe I imagined it, but I don't think so.
Yeah, so it looks like it, there's an existing stormwater detention facility kind of underneath of the driveway and parking stalls closest to state route twenty.
And those driveway and parking stalls already, they exist now, even though they extend across onto what what I might call the phase two parcel. I realize it's not exactly, yeah, all right, okay. And then there was another one, there's in the northwest corner, there's I also see a bio retention facility to be reworked. Presumably, that's that's the reference to we may need a larger stormwater facility. There's a couple of them.
There's a number of existing bio retention systems.
All right. And when it says to be reworked, that means potentially we need to enlarge them.
Correct.
All right, and is there any reason to think that we can't do that? There seems to be plenty of room, right?
No reason to think that they couldn't, no.
All right, well, I think obviously, it needs to be done at some point. My my only hesitation is, does it need to be done now? I think the answer is probably no, that they, you know, if they had to, they could even put it on the other side of the road there. So, yeah, I I I think I won't worry too much about stormwater right now. All right, let's see if I've got anything else for you. All right, I think that's it. So do send me the issued decision on three sixty two because there are, you know, some matters, including the special public notice requirements that I I need to just verify that those did happen. But other than that, I think I am satisfied with your testimony. Thank you so much, Ms. McGowan. And and again, I apologize for coming up with these crazy questions that that hop from subject to subject. But it's just, it's it's stuff that I need to know before I can write my decision. So I appreciate you taking the time to hold my hand through all of this stuff. All right, is there anyone else from the city side or are we ready to switch to the applicant team?
No one else from the city side.
Excellent, all right. Ms. Duquette, you had some helpful testimony a moment ago, but it was a little bit out of order. I am ready to listen to you now, so let's get you sworn in as a witness. Will you raise your right hand, please, ma'am? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give today will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And can you confirm the spelling of your name, please?
It's A I M E E D U Q U E T T E.
All right, and what is your role with all of this, Ms. Duquette?
Working on behalf of Skagit County to submit required paperwork. We're the architect of record. I am not the, I am not the architect of record, but I'm filing on behalf of Lisa Pedersen of S R G partnership.
And she was the the architect of record who actually submitted the application or maybe that
No, we submitted the application, but for the permitting, which is obviously not what you're talking about, but for the for the next phase, she's the the architect of record.
All right. All right, Ms. Duquette, you were telling me a little bit about your future plans for storm, what did you have for me?
Yeah, so as part of the permit filing, which we've submitted to the city of C D R Woolley, we have
Is that because this too is
The building, the we're going for a building permit.
Okay.
As part of that building permit, we have a stormwater calculation that shows that we do not need to add any additional stormwater and that we are simply reworking, as you said, existing bioswells on the site.
What does that reworking entail?
We need to move one bioswell north adjacent to the parking, but we are not adjusting any of the parking or the hard the hardscape.
So those, the existing bioswells, if I'm reading the site plan correctly, are already, you know, pretty far north, essentially abutting the internal road. How are you going to
So it's it's going above that internal road north.
All right. Bioswells to be moved north of the road, okay?
Not all of them, but a couple of them need to be moved north.
All right. And anything else that I should be aware of with regards to stormwater?
I do not believe so.
All right, I'd like a copy of that stormwater report. Hopefully, it will have a nice clear site plan illustrating what you just
It will.
All right, so you can you can send that to Ms. McGowan. She will send that to me when she sends the twenty nineteen C U P, which I also need to see. So we'll we'll call those exhibit thirteen for the C U P and exhibit fourteen for the preliminary stormwater plan. All right. Well, what else would you like me to know, Ms. Duquette, about any subject?
I mean, do you have any questions regarding the?
No, did did you have anything to add to Ms. McGowan's testimony about Brickyard Creek and the the process by which its buffers were reduced, that 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 all was consistent with your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Presumably, you don't want me to re-investigate that issue. Very well, anything else at all, Ms. Duquette?
Do not believe so.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other members of the applicant team who wish to testify? Everyone's shaking their heads. All right, in that case, we will turn it over to members of the public, if any. Ms. McGowan, did anybody come down in person to the offices there?
They did not.
All right, and I don't see anyone that looks like a member of the public. I don't know who everyone is, but they all they all kind of look like county and applicant types. Any members of the public wishing to testify can now activate their cameras, microphones, press the, press the, what do you call it, the raise hand function or or take some kind of action to let me know that you wish to speak. Not seeing anyone on the participants list. Okay, all right, in that case, I'll conclude there is no public testimony. I don't know, Ms. McGowan, any any last thoughts, any response to anything we heard from Ms. Duquette about stormwater or anything else?
Uh, no, just as I, as I was looking through the old file, I did find that the hearing examiner decision was reconsidered, so I'll be sending you two documents. I'll send you the original decision and then the one on reconsideration.
Uh oh, this makes me worry that there was something unusual. Do you know what the reason for reconsideration was and who even asked for reconsideration? The applicant?
Gadget County Public Health requested clarification on condition six. It was just on the timing of completion of the phases. We put in a condition under the original saying, this conditional use permit shall become void if substantial progress toward construction of improvements is not made within two years from this date.
Right.
Decision. Or if the commencement of use related to phase one of the project has not begun within five years and the commencement of use related to phase two of the project has not begun within five years of the commencement of use for phase one. The date of commencement of use for phase one shall be the approval date of the certificate of occupancy for the building associated with phase one, so they requested that that be reconsidered. Applicant would prefer the condition be altered to ensure that it is clear so long as use of the property commences under phase one of the proposal within five years. That use would remain valid whether phase two of the proposal moves forward or not.
To me, that was clear just based on a, you know, I think yes is the answer. Is that clarification enough? Okay, well, but in anyways, it doesn't sound like there was anything substantively worrisome about this project that that I would freak out about if I read it after the fact here, eh?
Correct.
Okay, great, well, all right, well, send me three sixty two, including, I guess, the decision on reconsideration. Send me them both, we'll call them both part of exhibit thirteen. You should get from Ms. Duquette the preliminary stormwater plan, which we'll call exhibit fourteen. Once you send me both of those, I will declare the record closed. So we're holding it open only for that purpose, no, no other materials I need or want to see. And that includes no public comment, the the public had a chance to be here and they weren't. So just those two things, once I get them, the record is closed. If you send me that stuff today, the record closes today. If it comes, you know, tomorrow or Monday or whatever, then the record will close at that time. Once the record is closed, I have, I believe, ten working days to produce a decision. I don't think I will have any trouble meeting that in this instance. I do have other hearings on the calendar, but I think we've got enough time to get this out. This is not a complicated case, notwithstanding the creek stuff. And I'll send that written decision to Ms. McGowan, she will disseminate it to the applicant and any parties of record, which I think is basically nobody for this particular case. All right, I think that'll do it for today, Ms. McGowan. When you get a chance, can you send me the audio recording of today's hearing? I do refer back to the testimony when I'm drafting my decision. You don't have to do that today if you're busy, I'm not going to write this thing today. But if you could do it, you know, by the end of the week, that would be great. Okay, everyone, thank you for your time, thank you for your testimony, Ms. McGowan. Excellent job feeling the curveballs today. I do feel a lot more confident, just just procedurally that I know what's going on and that there's nothing weird. I feel a lot better about that than I did coming into this. So you've done an excellent job of of dealing with what I thought could be some potential issues on public notice and the R U X and so forth. I think pending my review of decision three sixty two, I think everything should be okay on those fronts. Ms. Duquette, thank you for coming in with stormwater. I appreciate you dropping off that extra plan for me. I do like to see this stuff. And so so that was well done as well. Okay, everyone, thank you so much for your time and I'll be on the lookout for those extra exhibits and the link to the audio. Have a good rest of your day. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Alex.